Thank you for joining us. This is our last budget hearing for fiscal year 2425. We've been meeting over the last month with department heads from all the departments to go over their budget. This is your last opportunity to hear from you regarding your ideas of what you would like to see happen in the 2425 budget to us. This is being broadcast, but the budget hearing is being broadcast by our Hartford Public Access Television Station. A couple of housecleaning issues that we need to go over. Each person will have five minutes. Councilman Gale will be the timekeeper. When you, when we call your name, because we only have one microphone, I'm going to call a couple of names so each person can get lined up because we have lots of residents who would like to speak to us tonight. When you, when your name is called and you come to the microphone, please state your name, your address. And again, you only have five minutes to speak. Councilman Gale is our timekeeper. So let's get started. I'm going to call a couple of names. And so can we all get lined up? Jonathan Mann, is he in, is he here? Okay, Jonathan. And right after you, Jonathan, we have Arlene Angel. And right after Arlene, we have, I'm going to really mess up this person's name, so please, I apologize. Last name is Ramirez? Bullock? Ramirez, okay. So let's go, alright? So let's get started, and we are here to listen to you regarding the fiscal year 2425 budget. Those are the issues we are here to discuss tonight.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Mann. I live at 101 Whitney Street.
Jonathan, give me a minute.
No problem.
Our mayor would like to say a few words before we get started.
Well, thank, thank you guys for being here. I, I, you know, this is the second public hearing we've had, and the first one came right after I presented our budget. And so just wanted to give a quick overview of what's in the budget and, and also kind of what we've heard since then. You know, I mentioned this the first time for those of you who are here, but when we came into the office, when I came into office, there was about, if we'd carried forward the budget from last year, about a $10 million deficit. And we worked really hard to present a budget that would be able to retain all of our city's services without cutting any positions, but also not raise our property taxes. And we're in a climate where a lot of towns our size, East Hartford, New Haven, and Sanford are raising property taxes. And for a lot of residents who were really hurting, really struggling to hold on to their homes, we, we thought it was important to toe the line. And in the midst of that, made some really important investments. There weren't, there weren't large investments, but we think that they were significant in our Office of Violence Prevention, in our new sports and rec department, in the Business One Stop, and in our housing liaison. But, you know, with, with payroll rising year after year and, and reductions in revenue, we wanted to be responsible, and we put forward a responsible budget. And after putting forward that budget, found out that as a result of ongoing deficits in the schools, that teacher positions were going to be cut, a number of positions were going to be cut, a total of about 380 positions would be cut in our schools this year. And so I, you know, I want to start by saying, I thank you to our council, who worked really collaboratively with me and our, and our state leaders as well, Speaker Ritter and Senator McCrory and, and others in, in our legislative delegation, to ensure that we could come up with the roughly $10 million that we were told we would need, a little over $10 million to ensure that those positions, the non-voluntary terminations, would be restored within our schools. And it took, it took a lot of work from the city side and, from the state side. And just to give you a sense of what is in that $10.5 million, it's about $5 million additional from the state in ECS funding. So in total, the state's portion of ECS funding has grown about $22 million in this budget cycle. It's, it's $1 million from the city taking on the, the school crossing guards on an ongoing basis in a way that will continue to provide sustainable budget reductions for the school to be able to use those resources elsewhere. And then $4.5 million in OPEB. And that last piece of it, I think there's been some questions about, and some, some folks just wanted to understand better how that works. And so I, I thought I'd kind of talk through that as, as part of this before, before we open up to a public comment. So what we've done going back is looked at OPEB contributions from the district. And for any certified teachers, these aren't your OPEB contributions, those are in the separate state fund. These are for a subset of employees within Hartford Public Schools. And there's about $26 million within that bucket of OPEB funds. Now, for about eight years at least, there haven't been any expenses paid for out of the OPEB. And all we are doing is taking expenses that should have been paid for out of the OPEB, which would have created budget space for the school district in the first place, to have perhaps avoided some of these terminations, taking some of those and retroactively funding them out of the OPEB. We're not drawing down on retirements, we're not putting anybody in a harmful fiscal position. In fact, it would still be one of the better funded municipal OPEB plans in the state. And so, you know, I just wanted to, to explain that. I know it's a little complicated, happy to talk more about it. But, you know, it was really important to us to try to be thoughtful and also come up with a solution that ensured that we could retain the teachers that we have in our schools. We understand, I think all of us at this table understand, that is not a permanent solution for our schools, that, that just retaining level funding is still failing a number of our students and, and a number of our faculty. And what is encouraging to me and really heartening to me is, I think for the first time, I don't remember any other time that this was true, the city council and the mayor's office and the state are all standing at the same table, sitting at the same table, we're all standing together and trying to work collaboratively on a solution. And so this isn't a, this is a funding solution for the fiscal year 25, but we hope to have more announcements coming up in the weeks ahead on a long-term solution for our schools going forward. And this is, this is a fight that we will be a lot more active in and, and insert our presence a lot more in, because I think we all have to be at the table in coming up with a solution to our schools' strategy that, that builds stronger and healthier schools in the future. So I just want to say thank you to my councils, my colleagues on the council, who worked very collaboratively with the mayor's office on this, as well as our state delegation. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, Mayor. One of the things I did not do, I did not introduce the members of the council here with us tonight. Starting from my right, we have Councilwoman Rosado, Councilwoman Billidoo, Assistant Majority Leader, here goes him again, TJ Clark, Majority Leader Marilyn Rosetti, my name is Councilwoman Shirley Sargent, we have, of course, our mayor. Going to the left, we have Councilman Milcar, Councilman John Gale, Councilman Josh Mitchum, and Councilman Alex Thomas. I see we have lots, this is really, I'm happy to see a lot of our residents are here joining us. We really always want to hear what everyone has to say, you know, as far as our budget is concerned. So thank you all for coming out and joining us tonight.
Mayor, could you explain again about the, about the...
Sir, let me say this, you know, we have a long night, we have about 47 people so far has signed up, and we're really going to hold you guys to the five minutes. Because I really want to hear everybody's point of view. So when Councilman Gale says, you know, it's time to close out, please do listen to him.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Mann. I live at 101 Whitney Street. On her first day of hybrid preschool at Annie Fisher Montessori, I'm so proud, wearing her khaki and navy blue outfit with pink shoes and, and pink frilly socks, my then three-year-old, now seven-year-old daughter, Pippi, walked into class and walked right up to another girl named Alice and said, "Do you want to be besties?" To which Alice replied, "Yes," and they've been inseparable ever since. Alice lives in West Hartford, and we live in Hartford. And once Alice's parents heard about these budget cuts, we were talking, and they had already been thinking about pulling her out of Annie Fisher and having her go to, you know, her, her designated West Hartford school instead. You know, her mom said, "The schools are already so underfunded. What is this going to do?" And, and Pippi and Alice, we haven't told them yet, but they're, you know, they'd be pretty heartbroken. So I'm really scared for, for the Hartford Public Schools. Students like Alice, as you know, are a huge part of, of our system. And I'm worried that as our schools get more and more underfunded, more and more students like Alice are going to leave, we're going to lose their funding, the schools will get worse, more kids will leave, it'll be this sort of cycle downwards. All kids deserve a good education, all Hartford kids especially. We want to raise our kids in a diverse and inclusive community, it's part of why we moved here, and we want all the kids in Hartford to succeed. So I know you're trying, please keep trying. The thing I was going to say before, I was wondering if you could explain again what you said about how the funds are working from the pension, because I didn't quite fully get that, that's what I was going to say before. Our teachers do so much, and we need more support staff, not less. Please help. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. We have Arlene Angel. Yeah, she was here.
Right here.
Oh. Good job. Excellent.
Hola, buenas tardes, concejales. Mi nombre es Arlene Angel, y vivo en Hartford desde hace más de 22 años. Tengo dos hijas que se graduaron en la Belisi, y soy madhawelita postiza de muchos niños que yo cuido, que son hijas de amistades, que asisten las escuelas públicas de Hartford, como en la escuela Naylor, MD Fox, y Belisi. Soy miembro de dos organizaciones aquí en Hartford conérico, de defensa, Make the Road, Madres Guerreras, entre el colectivo de defensa, y tenemos 500 familias de Hartford en nuestra membresía. Estos recortes públicos a las escuelas públicas van a ser un error muy grande. Venimos a este país por un futuro mejor en la educación en este país, que es mejor que la de nuestros países. Venimos aquí para hacer que nuestros hijos aprendan bien y contribuyan a esta sociedad. Justa que da a todas oportunidades equitativas, pero en mi, en mis dos décadas aquí veo que las escuelas públicas siguen empeorando. Sin hacer estos recortes de fondos a la educación estaremos peor que en nuestros países. Parece que nuestro estado se está desarrollando al revés. Por favor les pido, como residente de Hartford, que no, que no cometan este error de los presupuestos. Demandamos que den aún más ayuda para la educación y traducciones lingüísticas, programas después de clases, y para la educación especial a cada niño con problemas de aprendizaje. Pues sería un caos irreparable. Es justo y necesario que ahora apoyen aún más las escuelas, que es la educación y el futuro de nuestros hijos y de este país. Gracias.
Hello and good afternoon, council members.
And before you start along, please state your name and your address, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm reading the interpretation.
Oh, she's translating, okay.
My name is Arlene Angel Anhem, and I've been living in Hartford for 22 years. I have two daughters who both attended Belisi School, and I'm like a grandmother to the many children of friends who I take care of regularly, children who are students at Naylor, MD Fox, and Belisi. I'm a member of Hartford Deportation Defense and Make the Road Connecticut, and between our two organizations, we count more than 500 Hartford families as our members. These public cuts to our public schools are going to be a big mistake and have a huge negative impact. We came to this country for a better future and because the education here is better than in our countries. We came here so that our children can learn and contribute to a just society that gives everyone equal opportunities. But in my two decades here, I have observed that the public schools of Hartford continue to decline in quality. If these education cuts go through, we will be in a worse situation than in our countries that we left. It's like our city and state are developing in reverse. Please, I'm asking as a resident of Hartford that you do not commit this grave mistake with the budget. We demand that you allocate more support for education, for language services, after-school programs, and special education for every child who has learning disabilities before they fall behind irreparably. It is just and necessary that you find more funds to support our schools, because education is fundamental to the future of our children and this country. Thank you for listening.
Okay, please state your name and address, please. Still not working?
I think it's on.
I thought it's on.
After we figure out the school budget, we'll have to figure out the technology. Okay. Hello, my name is Bulong Ramiz, 535 Hillside Avenue. I'm an educator and a parent here today to tell you that our children and our teachers and our schools are worth fighting for. I, in 2023, chose to pull my daughter from Hartford Public Schools after walking into the office one day to hand in paperwork and hearing an overwhelmed teacher come in to talk about the class sizes that she had for the following year. I was fortunate enough to have been laid off, so I was able to stay at home for the year and homeschool my daughter. But I could not believe that a teacher walked in, not knowing who I was or why I was there, in such overwhelm that she would just share that information with the school secretary. And I pulled her that day. I knew after this moment and a few other scenarios that my child experienced at her public school, that I could not ensure that a Hartford Public School environment was a place where she would be fully seen, cared for, or offered the services that she needs and deserves. And it is not a failing of our teachers, it is a failing of the administrative body that has been overseeing this institution that we call Hartford Public Schools. We have had a spectacular year homeschooling and decided that we would re-enroll her into Hartford Public Schools per her request, right before the announcement that you will be laying off teachers. And I share this as a daughter of a teacher as well, and a daughter of a school social worker here in Hartford Public Schools. My mother and my grandmother also came, went to Weaver, so I have deep roots in Hartford Public Schools. And I want my child to be a product of Hartford Public Schools, and, once again, I'm unsure if Hartford Public Schools can provide her with the education that she needs and deserves. We know our schools are already underfunded, and instead of investing in our young people and their education, Hartford taxpayers are forced to send millions of dollars to support Israel's bombing of schools in Gaza. While this council, while this council refuses to publicly recognize the interconnectedness of our global struggles and our local realities by not signing on to a ceasefire resolution. The reality is, the Hartford education system has been failed by top-heavy, top-down administration, and the Hartford education system has been failed by people crafting solutions that are flimsy Band-Aids to decades of bleeding. We know that the realities of our current system is a result of decades of anti-black racism, white flight, systemic disenfranchisement, and a devaluing of black, brown, and immigrant communities. There needs to be an audit about where money is going and how it's being spent, there needs to be better management, and there needs to be dedicated investment centering our children and our educators. We need to find the money because our kids deserve it, our schools deserve it, and Hartford is only failing because we are failing it.
As we're going along, Alicia? And then after Alicia, we have Gilbert Walker. Don't have a last name. Don't have an address. Is the mic working? Is the mic working? Please go ahead, state your name.
My name is Alicia Ortiz, and I am senior in Hartford Public High School. For as long as I can remember, I was placed in special education. During my early years in school, so many things went wrong with my education. It would take me far more than five minutes. I should have been receiving so many more services than the, than the school could provide. I felt like they didn't care about my future. I now realize that this was due to a lack of funding and the inability to keep good teachers and staff. It kills me that the same feeling that I had growing up, that the system doesn't care. It's the same feeling I have now. I truly believe that you do not value me as a student and as a human being, and that you do not care about my education. Because when someone cares about something, they will do whatever it takes to support them. They won't wait until the last minute to figure out how to help, like you have done now. Yes, the city has identified more funds to include in the education budget, but only after we have marched and complained. I see the power that teachers and programming can make in a student life. However, next year's budget will take many heroes and many programs from our school, and it will be the student who continues to suffer the consequences of adult inaction. Students will have a seat at that table when you are making funding decisions, so you understand the importance of investing in our future. We will tell you that you should provide Hartford with more money to make up for the loss of extra funds, especially because the state have extra money in its budget. I'm starting to think that all of you are just here for power, not for change. I already believe that you do not, you don't understand the impact that those cuts will have on us. If you invest in education by increasing our funding, you can, you can change a lot of students' future. For me, it's kind of already too late, because I'm graduating, and I have not been able to make up for all of the learning losses in my early years. I'm going out to college, but I carry a huge fear that I'm not fully prepared for this step in many ways. For all of the other students coming after me, it's not too late, and you still can make a difference. I believe in the, in the time where teachers will not leave their profession due to their salary, or will not be cut due to a budget crisis. Hartford Public Schools give me so many reasons to leave, but I believe in a time where people will change their perspective of the schools in Hartford, and everyone will talk about our missing opportunities. I believe in a time where everyone across the state will want to come to Hartford Public School instead of leaving Hartford Public School. I believe in a time where no student is left behind, like I was. I believe in the power of education, because I have seen the negative and the positive impact that it has made in my life and in my future. Yes, it may sound like a dream, but I remember a teacher once told me that dreams can come true. And I truly believe, if I truly believe in them, and I truly believe in a better education system for Hartford, I hope that my story serves as a reminder to invest in our education system. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gilbert Walker. I'm a junior at HMTC. I believe it is wrong for Hartford Public Schools to cut our funds because students will be losing classes, teachers, and field trips. From my experience, having classes other than typical core classes, it made me feel as if I was getting smarter than I already was. The topics that extra classes had, such as sociology, music tech, and art, were impressive to me. I was learning something new, and as a current student, cutting these classes would definitely change the atmosphere of my school in a negative way. When you cut a relationship between a student and their favorite teacher, that student will have the thought in the back of their head that they'll never get, that they'll never get taught that way again. I personally know teachers that might get cut, and they just arrived at my school. I believe they deserve a chance to be at the school longer than just a year or two. Since this budget cut has occurred, students wouldn't enjoy the field trips that we have for years at HMTC, field trips are traditional at HMTC, and now that will be cut. My question is, is this, any of this happened in the suburb, in the suburban?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next up, we have Hannah Sims, and then right, right after Hannah, we have Kantanza. So we can get everybody all queued up, that'd be great.
I live at 68 Scarborough Street. This is Orion, he lives there too, he's 10 months old. And I, I bring him here today to remind you all that these consequences will not end this year, and that in five years, when my child, who I have raised very intentionally in Hartford, will be in the Hartford Public Schools, these cuts will still, the repercussions of these cuts will still be felt. And as you can see, this child should not be in an enormous class, because he will mess some stuff up. So I just, I'll, I'll be brief. I just ask you to consider the future, the next years of Hartford Public School students, and to listen to these incredibly brave students who have spoken to you already today. And that's all, that's all I have to say.
Hello, everybody. My name is Constanza Segovia, and I'm a mother of Hartford Public Schools. My daughter goes to Montessori Magnet at Bad Children. I'm here to urge our mayor and city council to find the funds... to find the funds in the Hartford City budget so that we can better resource our schools. It is shameful that our public schools have been flat-funded for 10 years. In what world is that what we're doing with our schools? Even though we celebrate, and we thank you for the work that it took to get 10.5 million extra this year or for next year, we are still facing $30 million in cuts. Our schools are already underfunded, understaffed, and under-maintained. The last thing our kids need and the last thing our city needs is to be abandoned at this critical time. My understanding is that there are ways to move funds from other departments in the city budget. I know this is not an easy task. I know there's a lot of money that is extra money in the city of Hartford, but I understand that the police department has some vacancies that could not be filled the same way we're doing with our teachers, right? Like the teacher vacancies that are not going to be filled. Maybe we can do that same thing with the police vacancies. And I believe that some money could be relieved there, and that would not result in any firing of any police officers, but would free up some money for our schools. I know everybody in this room knows about the tragic loss that we had of two high school students this past weekend. I know that for a lot of people here, that's not easy information to talk about in this context. And what I want to lift up is that the communities that are thriving in the state are not overpoliced. They are over-resourced. So I think it is this body's responsibility to really look at the budget and really look at what we can do to listen to the students that are talking today crying in front of you and to really find some money so that we can have schools that in the future can be the schools that the kids from other towns want to come to. The only investments that we're seeing are expansions of housing developments that are supposed to be affordable, but they're not affordable to anybody. And on top of that, we're giving tax breaks to these developers, and taxes go to fund public schools. So we're actually losing money to build more apartments that are not even affordable to our community and giving tax breaks to those developers? I just don't understand. So please, I know a lot of you are parents of Hartford Public Schools, and I know a lot of you have had kids go through the system, and I know this matters to you, but it is time to step up to your power, the position that you have, and do what's right for our city.
Thank you, Kintanza. Well, we believe the mic is now working. So the next person up to speak will be Bridget Allison. And then right after Bridget will be Melania Floyd. Trying to get everybody all queued up.
Think we are finally working? Yes, no? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to hold the microphone over here. My name is Bridget Allison, and I am a 20-year educator at Hartford Public High School. I am the... Those are my peers, and I am the teacher that accompanied Alicia Ortiz earlier in the evening. I want to echo everything that everyone else has said, so I will not repeat that. But I do have a couple of additional points to make. It is shocking to me that we all have to be here tonight, and in part, that is because this budget crisis has been forecast for years. So why is it taking until now for there to be a solution? There is no reason for this running around. Now, we are happy that a solution, in part at least, is finally being reached, so we want to commend you. You are working hard. But I need you to understand, and my colleagues need you to understand, and my students need you to understand the impact that this has already had on the mental health of the staff and the students in our schools. When we have staff members who are being told that they are losing their position in a beloved location, and they become upset, the kids see that, and then the kids become upset. That is on us adults. That is on you. That is on the legislature. That is on every other adult who hasn't made it a priority to invest in our system. You have crying and upset students because they are losing their beloved staff members that they have formed relationships with. On that note, it's very confusing. We keep hearing that that $10 million is going to restore all those positions. That can't possibly and mathematically be true, so I think that that's a confusing statement to keep making. And I also want to address the idea that, Mayor, you mentioned that the $4.5 million wasn't coming from the teachers' retirement pension fund. We knew that. We're aware of that. That's not why we're here, and that's not why we disagree with that move. We're here in solidarity with our colleagues. Teachers tend to get a lot of attention, right? Everybody's worried about the teachers. But we know that we are only successful because of all of the supporting staff, and that includes custodians, that includes people who work in the lunchroom, that includes our SSOs, that includes the people who are in the front office. Every single person in our school is vital, and no one's future security should be used as an ATM machine to find money for education, which is a necessary resource. And so our question is, how are we going to make sure that that money is restored? And I know that you had mentioned something along the lines of, well, it's 90% funded and blah, 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 and nobody cares. It's their future, right? It's their future. It should be 100% funded, and nobody should touch it. It's not an ATM machine. So what are we going to do to make sure that money gets restored? And what are we going to do to make sure that money gets restored in a way that it doesn't come from the Hartford Public Schools' budget? Because right now, you're asking current employees to pay for themselves. Just think about that. It's a little weird, okay? So again, I'm very happy when you said that we are all going to be working together, the mayor, the Board of Ed, the city council, to lobby those deeper pockets. We want you to know, we are here to help in that process. Okay? Because no matter what happened in the past, we are all a community here, and we all want what is best for our young people, like Alicia and the other gentleman that spoke. So what can we do to work together? Please, we are here to, you know, get people to show us the money. Thank you very much.
Right after Melania, Melania.
Molina. Molina.
Molina, thank you. I'm going to get ready for Dwayne David Paul. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Molina Floyd. I live at 526 Franklin Avenue here in Hartford. I work here in our city, helping our city as well at United Way, right here on Laurel Street. And I'm a very active member of the community. I am also a mom. My son is two. So in about three years, he will be a member and a future product of Hartford Public Schools. And so to someone's point earlier about the trickle-down effect, this is not going to just affect these kids now. It's going to affect kids forever, including mine. So I'm here, and I want to speak up. I'm also a product of a public school system that cut funding when I was attending. So this is now 15 years of coming to public comments and speaking. Seems like I don't even know if I'm getting anywhere at this point. Is this thing on? Are people listening? Now, you are telling us that there's 10.5 million going back into the school system, which shows that the city and the state acknowledge the need for the funding to be restored. But that's not enough. That is not the amount that was taken, and that is not going to fix the problems that will be caused from the lack of funding. The teachers, like my friend who I was sitting right next to, they need more support, not less. Our children deserve to be in safe, clean schools with small class sizes and arts education. These cuts will make that impossible. The city of Hartford must prevent these cuts and invest in its future. So I've looked at the budget because it is public domain information. I can just look it up whenever I want. And I urge every resident and any person who has any interest to just look it up. It's right on the city's website. You can take the money from the parking authority, the police station, and you don't need to take it from the schools. There is plenty of other places I've looked at as well. Those are just the two biggest ones that are the most funded that could see the cuts without, you know, doing too much damage from my own analysis. Or, as somebody else pointed out earlier, you could take the money that you're sending to Israel and actually put it back into the Hartford residents, the schools. Because we have spoken up several times about how we don't want that happening. So that money can go back to the city, to the residents, because the residents are the ones who go to Hartford Public Schools. They deserve field trips. We had field trips growing up. They deserve field trips. And I would like to give the rest of my time for you to think about how you could do better to build a healthier public school system, like you so eloquently said, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dwayne David Paul. I'm a Hartford resident. I live at 70 Rush Street. I'm also an educator and a writer and a leader in the Greater Hartford Interfaith Action Alliance. So I don't have children at all, much less in Hartford Public Schools. But I went to public school myself from kindergarten through the 12th grade, and I've lived through the types of cuts being proposed in this year's education budget. And I'm absolutely repulsed by the idea of our children experiencing that today. That is especially true because I don't think I've seen a state-level politician in the last two years without them reminding us and patting themselves on the back about the great surplus of funds that are available, that exist but are unavailable at the state level. It's especially perverse that we're trying to make a dollar out of 15 cents when these mysterious funds that are there, absolutely, but just can't possibly be accessed, exist. And like my neighbors have said, you know, when our state and federal and city, frankly, elected officials refuse to call for a ceasefire and an end to our ongoing funding of the Israeli military and settler project. So studies consistently show how even relatively modest increases in per pupil funding positively impacts educational attainment and reduces incidence of poverty later in life. Given the stakes, Hartford can't afford to go in the opposite direction. We must invest in our children. They deserve small classrooms in safe, clean schools with all the support they need. I ask that the council exhaust all possible means to ensure that our schools get all the funds that they need and that you'll be transparent with how state funds are being spent by the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ian Williams, followed by Iman.
Hello, council members, mayor. First off, my address, 201 McClintock Street, New Britain. I spent majority of my elementary years here in the Hartford Public School system. And as a matter of fact, I went to Annie Fisher right down the street. Yeah. In those years, I can remember the conditions of our classrooms and the lack of updated school resources. I can fondly remember a history book with pages ripped out and drawings all over them. The school materials were often dated before I was even born. And there was much adversity coming up in those times with the budget even being an issue back in 2003 and 2004 and the majority of the period I was in, the Hartford Public Schools in elementary. But amidst all of that adversity were the courageous and persevering teachers, paraeducators, and counselors who did all in their abilities to ensure that even with a limited budget and unlimited school resources, that we could get the best education possible. And to this day, I still think about those who had a profound impact on my life and helped me become the best person I could be in those times. You know, I had my art teacher, Mr. Beckford, and my second-grade teacher, Mrs. Reed, and more importantly, my grandmother, who was involved with Annie Fisher and the Hartford Public School system for 40 years, and she was known as Mrs. Wilson. My grandmother today still has former students from the 70s who ask her how she's doing and proceeds to explain how she's helped them in times when others wouldn't. There's something about that which is so special, and that is the real human connection that students require from those they look up to. And I carry this today myself as an assistant teacher in the school system. The connections that I have and have been able to forge with my kids, my students, who see me every day and smile so brightly because they're happy to see me, I realize that it was bigger than me, that I am special and influential in their lives, and I'm following in the footsteps of those who inspired me to be the best person I could be. And council members, I'm asking you, for the future leaders of tomorrow, you must show transparency and accountability of how the state funds are being spent by the superintendent as well as exhausting all possible resources to continue funding the school system to its full potential because we owe it to these kids to give them the education that they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Iman? That was Iman. Okay, then we go on to David Fraser.
Good evening. My name's David Fraser. I'm a social studies teacher at Hartford Public High School, and I have been for 20 years. And this is one of my co-teachers, Mike Susie, and we'll explain why he's up here in a minute. But I think most of you probably know, given your positions, the history of Hartford Public High School, but I'm going to tell you anyway. Since 1638, Hartford Public High School has been educating the children of Hartford, Connecticut. And just, I've been a teacher in 20 years. I know I look old, but it is my second or third or fourth career or whatever. But I was happy to get assigned to Hartford Public High School, and it's been wonderful. Even though in the last 20 years, we went through a very successful accreditation, we were almost immediately split up into all these smaller learning academies, we went through a total restructuring for reasons we still can't understand, and recently, we're kind of glued back together into what they call a comprehensive high school. We've had close to a dozen principals and administrators, and it's been wonderful. I love teaching at Hartford Public High School, and I love the kids. You were very lucky to meet Alicia there. Unfortunately, I've never gotten to teach, but I know her from the hallways. A great kid. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, city council, I'm pretty sure one of your goals in your positions is to attract people to the city of Hartford. I've got a daughter moving to Connecticut from Washington, DC. She would love to make a home in Hartford. But what is she doing? She's looking at the top school systems in the state because she's got three little kids. So she's going to end up in Madison or Guilford or someplace like that. I would love to have her in Hartford because I'm a Washington, DC boy myself. It just drives me a little crazy. We're trying to attract business. We're trying to attract families. We're trying to attract everybody. And what are we doing? We're showing them that we don't give a damn about our education system. That's just not right. We need to show the state and the country that we're behind it more than West Hartford, more than Glastonbury, more than everybody. I don't know where you're going to get the money. I know that's a problem. I've got a budget, but that's something why you guys were elected. Go find the money. I don't know where or when or how, but we're going to do it. But anyway, do I seem a little angry? I am. Why am I angry? This isn't going to affect me. I'm probably going to retire next year or possibly this year, and I'll explain why. What I'm upset about is explaining to the great kids like Alicia you just met and the other 700, 800 kids we have why their favorite social worker, who they've established a relationship with, has to leave because you were born in the wrong zip code. Or why is it that the security guard that supports you, no matter what kind of trouble you've gotten into, has to leave because you were born in the wrong zip code? Counselors, why the counselor who got you into college, found you- Counselors, why the counselor who got you into college, found you all sorts of scholarships, isn't that, sorry, has to leave because you were born in the wrong ZIP code? That's just not good enough, okay? The reason I have Mike up here, Mr. Soucy, is because we have a little bit of a problem in our school. We only have enough money for me or him, not both, okay? I bring a lot to the table. I teach college classes. I can give UConn credit. Six credits to a kid who takes my US History class. But this guy here, brand-new teacher, probably better teacher than I can ever dream of being because he went through a proper, I went through the alternate route to certification. I'm faking it. Anyway, but he's good. He stays after school. He coaches volleyball. He scores basketball. He does every little thing. The kids love him. His staff love him. The rest of the staff love him. Everybody loves him. But we don't have the money for both of us. Again, this man right here is a far greater asset to Hartford, the city of Hartford and Hartford Public Schools than I'll ever be. I'll be sitting on a beach somewhere in a year, and I'll be history. Nobody's ever going to remember I was here. That's fine. Mr. Mayor, City Council, ah, whatever. City Council, Mr. Mayor, please find the money, not only for him, but for those counselors. I know it's out there somewhere. Find it. I've got to finish. Everybody keeps telling me I've got to finish. I spoke in front of the Board of Ed last month, and my quote that made it to the newspapers was this flat-based budget is crap. Please, do something right for the kids of Hartford.
Thank you. Next up is Malana Rogers Burson. And then after Malana, we have Ruth Rims.
Yeah, hello. My name is Malana Rodge. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Malana Rogers Burson. I live at 272 Oxford Street. And as others here, I'm here to ask the council to exhaust all resources to find adequate funding for our schools and also to exercise transparency in the allocation of the $5 million coming from the state. I think all of us can agree that we, you know, we can say that we care about our schools, and I think everyone will say that, but I think this is also about priorities. And as a Hartford resident who has worked in the public schools, I am upset by the lack of funding for our public schools while our city budget allot so much for policing. In fact, we have more police here than 99% of other cities our size. So I think you've already heard about the devastating impact that this can have on our schools from, you know, students, teachers and parents here. But we're seeing the worst cuts of our schools in 20 years. I worked in the public schools 10 years ago. I worked with the YMCA in after-school programs and Noah Webster, Hartford Pre-K Magnet and Annie Fisher. And I loved working with the students and being able to provide the additional support after the day was done. And one of those students that I worked with when he was six was actually here today testifying. And it's really a shame that he has to come here today and, you know, after school, on a school night, to fight for resources for his school. I'm also the co-founder and organizer with the Hartford Jewish Organizing Collective. So a lot of us were here a couple months ago, fighting for a ceasefire resolution. And we've been fighting for months for a ceasefire in Gaza and against the genocide that's happening to Palestinians. And it really stands out that while our schools are receiving so little funding, Hartford taxpayers are forced to pay 18.7 million just this year to fund the bombing of other children. So our kids deserve the best education possible. This will only make our community better for everyone. Investing in our education is good indicator of the overall health and quality of life in our community. Hartford City Council and the Board of Ed have the opportunity today to prioritize our kids and invest in them. And just to clarify, that 18.7 million, that's federal taxes, including the new kind of 26 million that was just passed, 26 billion, sorry, that was just passed to go to Israel. So this is not, I know this is not necessarily in your power, but it's still stark difference in what Hartford taxpayers are forced to pay out while our schools here are defunded. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth? And after Ruth, we have Sam Putlin.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. My name is Ruth Krems. I live at 161 Beacon Street in Hartford. I'm a mother, a grandmother. My three sons attended Hartford Public Schools. I'm also a registered nurse, recently retired from 38 years at Capital Community College. Thank you. Thank you. At the college, over the years, I interacted with thousands of students. Certainly, more than 50% were from Hartford Public Schools, well over 50%. They were delightful and wonderful. They came to me ready to our program, which was actually the Nurse Aid Certification Program at Capital. They came ready to learn, prepared and ready to learn. You know, some a little more prepared than others, but it's okay. We worked with the students. The students did well. As a matter of fact, some of the students went on to become licensed practical nurses or registered nurses and now teach in the program or over the years have taught in the same program that they started as a Nurse Aid Certification student. So there's a lot of power there. It was great. It was my honor to work with the students, population that we served. I have very strong feelings about the current proposed budget cuts. Honestly, I'm not too good with budgetary stuff, so I'm not, I can't, you know, at all speak specifically to them. But I'm really horrified to think that some Hartford children will not have art. They won't have the math that they need. They won't have, I mean, you know, what's up with this? It makes no sense. It's, you know, it's totally unequal. It should not be unequal to what the students in the suburbs get, period. Also, there's been a pandemic, or a few years ago, there was a pandemic. We know that a lot of issues arose with students during the pandemic and still are with them to this day. So you guys really are going to be talking about these budget cuts that are going to just, you know, add to the problems created by the pandemic? Please don't do it. I have utter disdain, again, I don't have really specific knowledge, but I have utter disdain for Hartford students getting less of an education than the students in the suburbs, in the surrounding suburbs. Please do what you've got to do, Mayor, Council, please. You know, I don't know where the money is, but somebody knows where the money is. And what, we're the richest, are we the richest state in the Union? Are we? I mean, and we're the second richest? Who's the first? Well, somebody. Come on, guys, find the money. Take care of our students. I'm retired now, but I want the future students going to Capital. Well, it's not called that. It's called CT State Capital now, right? Because of consolidation. I want the future students to be as well-prepared and eager to learn, et cetera, et cetera, as the students that I worked with those 38 years. So at any rate, what am I trying to say? I'm going to try and wrap it up here. I am new to this battle, but there are community groups represented here who... Did anyone see the rally on the way in? It was, yeah, beautiful, okay? Yes, I thought you did. Yeah, I want to join this battle. I want to, you know, I'm in retirement. I've got a little time on my hands, right? Okay? And I want to use the time with purpose. And I want to see what I can do to help ensure that the kids coming up have what my kids had and what kids before them had. Thank you very much. One more thing, in case anyone knows this reference, "la luta continua", the struggle continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam? Follow Sam is going to be Fernando Ricardo Valenz. Okay, I'm sorry. Right after, what, after Sam, we have Fernando, Fernando, Ricardo.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Sam Putlin. I live at 34 Congress Street, where I bought a home last year for the first time. So I'm not a parent. I'm not a teacher. I don't really care for any of those people. But I am a taxpayer now, and I'm pretty horrified at how you've been mismanaging my money. So schools are providing an essential service to this city. I don't think anyone here would actually disagree with that. But you're taking their funds away, and you're sending more to our lowest-functioning department, one that does demonstrably worse every time you reward them for their poor performance. The only thing that's going to bring down the sky-high crime rate that that department has created is opportunity, the kind of opportunities created when our children get the education that they deserve. And it's kind of the same thing that's gotten us here. That failure to see past your nose and think at least a couple steps ahead has put us... We don't have a budget crisis. We have a crisis policy, right? So this same one-size-fits-all logic of flat funding and cuts is the reason that the departments responsible for collecting revenue, the tax collector, Corporation Council, the mayor's office, are not able to do their jobs, and this city is leaving tens of millions of dollars on the table every year. Underfunding creates deficits, not the other way around. I am waiting for the year when you learn the definition of fiscal responsibility, start taking your job seriously, properly fund our schools, and stop eating the city's seed corn. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernando?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Fernando Ricardo Valenzuela, and I currently live in the south end of Hartford. I'm testifying today to urge the City Council to exhaust all possible resources to ensure that Hartford Public Schools get the funding they need to adequately educate and provide for all of its students. I'm also asking for the City Council to provide full transparency and accountability to Hartford residents around the allocation of any and all state funds used by the superintendent. As an educator of many years, a recent graduate from UConn School of Social Work, and an organizer with Connecticut Social Workers for Palestine, I'm also concerned about how the city budget prioritizes excessive funding for Hartford Police over our students' fundamental human right to education. I don't want to belabor the point that many others have already echoed tonight, but it is important for all of you to understand and really sit with how these budget cuts would cause widespread consequences across Hartford Public Schools if you do not prevent the cuts from happening. Our schools cannot afford to lose hundreds of teachers, counselors, paraeducators, custodians and social workers. Allowing these budget cuts to go through would negatively impact our students, their families, and the hundreds of others who work directly with the future generations of the city, all of whom deserve to work and learn in a city that adequately funds its public schools. As an educator for almost 10 years, and I actually have my mom here with me, who recently retired after 25 years of being in education, I think I can say that we have both seen firsthand the deterioration of public schools in Hartford and beyond due to a lack of funding. Teachers have long been overworked and underpaid, desperately trying to educate students in overcrowded classrooms. Social workers have been working to address the worsening mental health crisis plaguing youth for years, and our students have been trying to catch up from a global pandemic that has impacted their physical and mental health, their social life, and especially their education. Allowing these budget cuts to go through will make all of these and other problems worse, and the brunt of the work will fall on the few teachers, social workers and other staff that do not have the capacity to take on more responsibility. I submitted testimony for the ceasefire resolution back in February, and everyone who was there that night heard you explicitly state that you would rather prioritize Hartford residents than pass that resolution. This is your opportunity to stay true to your word, to show us that you really care about Hartford and its students. While schools and universities are being decimated in Gaza, while tens of thousands of Palestinian children will never get the opportunity to the education they deserved, the least you can do is exhaust all possible resources to fund Hartford's public schools and ensure that they meet our children's educational needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person up will be Elijah Rosenfield, then Marlon Chimbo Wans. Elijah? Hi.
My name is Elijah Rosenfield. I'm 13 years old. I've lived in Hartford all my life. I've been in the Hartford Public School District for three years. Honestly, this decision is illogical and depressing. It shouldn't happen. Schools are already underfunded, and underfunding them more just doesn't make sense when there are other positions or places that you can actually take out funding that don't need it, like police. They don't need it. As you've heard before, maybe you could use that money to push the help of mental health. Mental health has been a huge issue lately. And also, if you increase the money for schools, it could help lower, like, crime since a lot of these people who commit crimes might have turned, like, not have decided to do what they've done if they've, like, had help when they were younger. Also, for my generation, we've always been told that it's our responsibility to help the world. But how can we help the world if we keep on getting these terrible things, like money away from our schools? And since how, the world kind of feels broken sometimes of how all these issues keep piling up. We've all seen them. It's hard to not see them, honestly. I just think you could do better and think that, you think through this decision of where this money will be going to your residents since I feel like if you allow this to happen, it'll look very bad on you. That's kind of it.
Thank you, Elijah. That was great. Thank you. Next, we have Marlon Chimbo. Stefan Keller. And then after Stefan, we have Sheila Basquez.
All right. Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Stefan Keller. I live at 32 Ashley Street in Asylum Hill. I'm here speaking similarly to so many folks here for the full funding of Hartford Schools. I know there's limited time and lots of parents and students here to speak, so I'll be as brief as possible. I think some folks have already presented some possible solutions around unfunded positions in the police department, other places where money could potentially come from. That's in the short term, right? We need to fill the short-term crisis. And I think in the long term, right, there are ways that we need to work together to really provide equity and resources to Hartford. One of the reasons I'm here is I grew up in Bethany, which is a small town outside of New Haven, which has lots of property taxes to fund its school system. We had a very well-funded school system. But when you walk down the street, you don't see anyone, right? It is not designed for community. It is designed for people to live their individual lives. And as a visibly queer and trans person, and as someone searching for community, I couldn't find that where I grew up. So in 2014, I came to Hartford. I've been in the city for 10 years. And I so much value and think about the strong community that Hartford has. I work for Make the Road, Connecticut. I'm a member of Hartford Deportation Defense. So many members are here, have done two years of tenant organizing. And being in many buildings, I've spoken before the council about the needs of housing in Hartford. And we know that long term, right, the inequities that exist in terms of the funding and the way the state does or doesn't allocate money to Hartford. And I think this is something that we can work on together because we here have the power of community, right? None of these things get done without the organizing that happens and like the value that folks bring and parents and students coming here on a busy school night to speak to the council, and also the power that y'all have in your positions. I was recently at the State Capitol, trying to lobby for more eviction protections for tenants. Mayor, you were there to speak to folks about more funding for the city. That same day, there was a rally for the schools where we, you know, spoke, tried to speak to folks at the State Capitol. Josh, you were there, speaking in the ways that there needs to be more funding for Hartford. So I think long term, we need to work together, right? Because the city deserves to have full funding from pilot, from the equitable school, the school funding formulas. Like, all of that will require all of us to use the power that we have. And I think as a community member that is not in a decision-making role, something that ends up being really frustrating is when people that... when people that actually have power and decisions that have decision-making power don't make good on the, on the, that power they have, when they shirk responsibility to other people. We see this happen so much in the state legislature, and I think that all of us in this room, we have the community power here, and y'all up there also have some of the power of an elected position that we all elected y'all into, right? So I think that's us working together, right? I think the only way that happens, that the long-term resources and funding that we need happens when we all work together to do that. So, like I said, I think there's been some great proposals from folks about the short term. How do we fill this gap now? Because students and teachers need things right now. And I'm saying, like, we will be here organizing for these long-term changes. We have been, right? We have been showing up. So how do we work together to make sure that the town I grew up in, right, who is white, has all these resources, pays its fair share in these formulas, right, to make sure that Hartford, that provides so much deep community for so many people, has the resources it needs? Thank you. I took more time than I expected, but I didn't have a, I didn't have a, like, a remarks. I just spoke. Oh, no, I'm good.
Thank you, Stefan. Uh, Sheila Basquez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Sheila, residente de Hartford. Tengo un niño de siete años que estudia en la escuela M.D. Fox. Recientemente me involucré en un comité de madres llamadas Madres Guerreras de la organización Make the Road. Nosotras madres de Hartford creemos que todos nuestros niños merecen una buena educación. Llevamos a los Estados Unidos un poco más de un año y mi niño está en la educación bilingüe porque todavía está aprendiendo inglés. Yo veo que le falta este personal bilingüe porque solamente tiene una profesora en el colegio y cuando la profesora está ausente, eh, los niños no pueden, no les pueden dar clases, solamente les mantienen jugando diferentes este tipos de juegos y no les dan clases de aprendizaje porque no tienen otra profesora bilingüe, solamente una en todo el colegio. Este... Solamente, eh, perdón. Ah, en las vacaciones también que, que se vienen próximos, yo averigüé a ver si había para que mi niño podría estudiar y no puede estudiar porque mi niño no sabe inglés. Solamente hay profesoras de inglés y no lo va a poder matricular porque no hay profesora en español. Eh, debe ser una, debe haber más de una profesora para que puedan, este, poder apoyarlos a los niños. Debe ser dos o tres profesoras bilingüe en esta escuela para que se enseñe bien el español a todos los grados hasta el nivel avanzado. Nuestros hijos merecen la oportunidad de aprender bien su idioma para que se les pueda presentar, presentar diversas oportunidades. Nuestros estudiantes son el recurso más valioso de nuestra ciudad. Demandemos al Consejo Municipal que invierta a nuestros hijos para el futuro de nuestra ciudad. Gracias.
My name is Sheila. I'm a resident of Hartford. I have a son who's seven years old and attends the school M.D. Fox. I recently got involved in a committee of parents called Madres Guerreras with the organization Make the Road Connecticut. We mothers of Hartford believe that all of our children deserve an excellent education. We arrived here in the U.S. a little over a year ago, and my son is in bilingual education as he continues to learn English. I've seen that there are not enough bilingual educators to teach these classes. There's just one for the entire school, so when she's out, the kids have no class at all, and they're playing and doing other activities, and they don't learn anything. During the vacation sessions, when they offer remedial classes in English, they don't have it in Spanish for the bilingual students, so they're not able to take these classes and catch up with their peers. So, our, our children lose opportunities because of this lack of services that already exist. There should be more than one bilingual teacher in a school like M.D. Fox with so many Spanish-speaking students. There should be two or three bilingual teachers in this school so that Spanish can be taught well at every grade, including the most advanced levels. Our children deserve the opportunity to learn their own language well and know how to use it in a professional capacity so that they can get good jobs with their bilingual skills. Our children are the city's most valuable resource, and we demand that the City Council invest in our children and in the future of our city. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Uh, next up is going to be Adam Boulmasch, and then Susan White right after. She's gone? All right. Then if, uh, then about, um, Gillian Davey?
Good evening, Council members. My name is Adam Boulmasch, and I live at twenty-one Temple Street in the St. John's Apartments, uh, here in Hartford. I am a social worker, a member of the Hartford Jewish Organizing Collective, and an intern for the American Federation of Teachers. My mother was a school-based social worker in Danbury. She fought every day for twenty-three years for the mental and psychological well-being of her students. It's positions like hers that are under threat by these cuts, so I'm here today in her memory. I'm here to tell you that children deserve safe and clean schools with small classes, with small class sizes, and art education, and ample resources. These cuts will make that impossible. Councilman Josh Mickdom has already detailed how easy it would be to trim some of the bloat out of the fattened police budget to make up for some of the education deficits. Educating our children is too important. To prioritize funding cops over our children is simply unconscionable, especially when we know those cops are only gonna take that money and use it to brutalize our residents and over-police our streets. Indeed, there is no clearer sign of systemic racism than a city whose demographics are predominantly black and brown choosing to prioritize policing those residents, those residents over educating them. This is not how we improve our city. We know for a fact that these cuts are going to result in fewer teachers, overflowing classrooms, poorer learning outcomes, and inattentive care for our higher-need students. The city of Hartford must prevent these cuts and invest in its future by exhausting all resources to find the money to fund our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Barbara, okay, and you are a man? Come on out. Your name is, please?
Gillian Davey. Good evening.
Okay, thank you, Gillian.
Good evening. My name is Gillian Davey. I live at nine-seventy-four West Boulevard. I'm a proud Hartford resident, a social worker, and an organizer with the Hartford Jewish Organizing Collective. I'm here to urge our mayor and our City Council to exhaust all possible resources to find the money to fully fund our schools. You've heard from many people who have spoken at length about the dire need for funding our schools and how our schools here in Hartford are in crisis. As you've heard, this proposed budget will cut over a hundred teacher positions and also cut so many vital services and support positions like school social workers, counselors, paraeducators, and custodians that our children all need to learn and thrive. How can we have a healthy and thriving community here in Hartford if we don't invest in our children and properly fund their education? How can we grow and flourish as a community if our children do not have the opportunities to grow and learn in their own neighborhoods? While our public schools are struggling to survive with these catastrophic budget cuts, the proposed city budget allot significant funding for the police. As you've heard and as you know, Hartford already has one of the largest police forces of any city its size in this country. Educating kids is far more important and far more effective than policing them. We don't need more police. We need more money invested in our schools. So I'm asking the council and the mayor to take funding from the police budget and invest it in our schools, specifically in teachers, supporting staff, and custodian positions, and building maintenance. In addition to pulling funding from Hartford's overbloated police force, City Council and the mayor must also exercise transparency in the allocation of the funding coming from the state. I would also like to take a minute to talk about how our struggles here in Hartford are not separate or isolated from the genocide Israel is currently committing in Gaza as we are sitting here right now. This genocide is being done with our taxpayer dollars, our taxpayer dollars that are not going towards educating our children but are instead bombing and starving Gaza's children. Hartford taxpayers were forced to send eighteen-point-seven million dollars to fund the bombing of schools and the murdering and maiming of children in Gaza. Yet this City Council refused to denounce this genocide and passed a ceasefire resolution condemning the genocide back in February. Three months later, we are facing devastating budget cuts that will be catastrophic for our children and community. With the eighteen-point-seven million dollars Hartford is sending to Israel this year, we could have funded a hundred-and-eighty-seven positions here in Hartford. You all failed to condemn genocide, but you have the opportunity to prioritize our children in Hartford and invest in life and education and divest from death. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Barbara Medalis. Uh, after Barbara, we have Ann Marie Wellington.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, uh, parents, teachers, and community members. My name is Barbara Medalis. I am not a Hartford resident, but I am a math teacher at Hartford Public High School, and I have been for twelve years. Uh, thank you. Thank you. Um, so I'm not going to repeat what other people have said much more succinctly and more eloquently than I would. I was not prepared to speak, so I have no speech ready. I'm just speaking from my heart here, but I wanted to offer a perspective that, um, I have, and that is about teaching math classes in a public high school in a city where students have challenges. Um, I have seen myself firsthand, and my colleagues will agree that they've seen the same thing, our students need small classes with support, whether it's special ed support, whether it's ML support for our English language learners, whether it's behavioral support from our behavior techs and our social workers and our counselors and our school resource officers. When those things happen, our children can learn successfully. When those things do not happen, it's very difficult for them to fill in the gaps that they have in their learning. Sometimes the gaps are because they came from a country where they did not have regular schooling. Sometimes it's because they went to school in Hartford and I heard horrible stories about children who didn't have a math teacher for all of seventh grade, and I thought they were making that up until I looked into it and found out that yes, it's true. Sometimes there is no math teacher for seventh grade in some of our middle schools, which I find appalling. Um, I also find it ironic, you guys, that today is the day we're talking about funding the school system, and today is Teacher Appreciation Day. So... So, in recognition of that, what I was doing yesterday and today was asking my students in my classes to write thank-you notes to their teachers, thanking them for any kind of support or help that they've gotten from their teachers. And the students rose to that occasion brilliantly. They wrote beautiful thank-you notes to many, many teachers, thanking them for support, for encouragement, for the time and effort they put into making and teaching their lessons. Um, my students thanked me. I got one that, that brought tears to my eyes, thanking me for the energy that I bring to my teaching and the joy that they see me have in teaching that then in turn ignites their interest and their pleasure in taking geometry classes with me. And Council members, I have to tell you, with these budget cuts, we're not going to have small classes. We're not gonna have class sizes where teachers have the energy and the joy and the time to support the students and encourage them as they need. They're not going to get the additional support from the staff like EL teachers and SPED teachers, and the children will suffer. And so, I'm just asking that please, if there's any way to restore more funding so that we can teach the children the way they deserve to be taught, we need to maintain smaller class sizes. We need to maintain all those different support staff that our children desperately need. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Barbara, Barbara, hello? Barbara, can we please give Barbara a round of applause for being the Teacher of the Year? And thank you.
Good evening. Um, Dr. Annie Wellington. I do not live in Hartford, though my heart lives at fifty-five Fourth Street, Hartford Public High School. Public education is meant to be the great equalizer. Sadly, this is not the case in Connecticut, especially not in Hartford and our other urban schools. This budget is setting our children up to fail, not only in school but in life. Every single study on class size that I've read in twenty years in education says that small class sizes and interventional support helps students grow academically. The current budget book sent out by the Hartford Public Schools sets up just the opposite scenario for our children. We need to do better. That comes with a budget that provides for the needs of our students. We need to fund our schools to provide the resources our students require for their success, not only in our classrooms but beyond. There needs to be more fiscal, financial support, more oversight of the Board of Education and their spending, and more accountability from the top-down of the Hartford Public School system. There needs to be more scrutiny of how our limited funds are being spent to directly support our students through teachers, support staff, security, building-level services, rather than central office redundancy, outside consultants with little daily impact or data to show their success, and student learning. And I implore that the City Council not stop until every child in Hartford is be given a fair chance for receiving a comprehensive, appropriate education. Please continue to fight for the futures of our children. They deserve better, and as Connecticut's capital city, do better.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Jennifer Perez, uh, followed by Anna Sims. She didn't, all right, so let's go, signed up twice. Corey Brinson. Go ahead.
I can start?
Yes, please.
Can we restart the clock, please? Because if you're gonna give me five minutes, we should just actually do it.
Please, go.
Fine. I'll go then. Uh, so my name is Jennifer Perez-Caraballo. I live on, uh, Gillette Street. I am from Hartford. Um, I am a parent of a child born and raised, um, in Hartford. Um, I myself, uh, am born and raised in Hartford, um, and also am a graduate of Hartford Schools. So you can thank Hartford Schools and other wonderful staff for all the organizing that happens in our city for the most part, but we'll continue moving forward. Um, so, you know, it's funny because we're here to talk about the budget, and obviously I want y'all to figure out how you fund, um, our schools, and absolutely, I just like police and a couple other different departments that we could talk about. Um, and it's funny because I actually have a list of things, um, I think Hartford Schools are not doing well right now because we have given them a lot of applause, but I think let's be real, like, our schools are not working the way we'd like for them to work right now. Um, we don't, we don't support children who are being bullied, right? We create a culture, we don't create a culture of inclusivity that actually works against bullying. We are failing at supporting queer students, the teachers and administrators attempting to create a safe and inclusive culture for trans kids and the larger queer community, um, providing teachers with support so that they know what to do when they come to our schools, especially if they've never lived in the city, right? Language interpretation, forty-point-five of Hartford is Latino, and we do not have interpretation here, nor at the Board of Education community meetings, let alone on a day-to-day, and so it leaves those of us who are bilingual, those of us who are in community who are bilingual having to step in and actually do the work that is y'all's job, right? Because we elected y'all, so technically y'all would want to listen to us. So shouldn't you have somebody in here who can translate for you? I think you should, right? Um, then there's also systemic racism because we still are operating off of the logic that our students are only worth funding when they're sitting next to white kids. I'm sorry, the state calls it suburban kids. Um, better classes, obviously, um, teachers that are not brand-new, more support for all types of students that we have, and of course, music and art because I believe our kids deserve to create. Like, we have got to stop acting like Olivia Nugent, AKA Firebomb, Linda Lewis, Padre Mudas, Mercury, Arian Wilkinson, and the list goes on, right? Ocean Vong. These are all artists who have put Hartford on the map. So what do you mean we can't have art classes? That makes no sense. Um, but we can't talk about any of those things because we did not plan for alternative funding for positions and programs who were depending on temporary funding, and so our education system is now going to work with less, right? And the state has put money into this hole, and we should step up and put in more. And I have got to tell you that in a city that is eighty percent folks of color, it rubs me a bit the wrong way when we have a hundred unfilled police positions accounted for in our budget, right, but we're still choosing to eliminate educational position. That makes no sense, right? I'm looking at ten city council people, I mean, ten city officials, and sixty percent of y'all are folks of color, right? And I just don't see the investment- And I just don't see the investment in actually getting rid of the school-to-prison pipeline. What I see is y'all reinforcing it, and it doesn't make actual sense to me, because I do think y'all are great people. Um, so, out of the deep pettiness of my heart, too, um, but because your CEO there is extremely rude and has given community members inaccurate information, but has also, like, truly, in a car-strapped city where we send kids thirty minutes away so that they can have a better chance at a better education, I think it is reckless to have, um, to be funding, uh, Parking Authority, uh, and all of those crappy positions, um, and, you know, allowing outsiders to extort your residents, um, by towing their cars and keeping them somewhere. So I have so many different ideas, everything from like the actual pettiness of my heart, but in a real, from an equity standpoint, but also like those a hundred unfilled police positions and maybe buy different cop cars. I don't know. The point is, sixty percent of y'all are folks of color. Why are y'all not more invested in stopping the school-to-prison pipeline? Please, help us. We're here. We're organizing. Y'all can't say we're not here. Let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Corey Brinson? No, Corey, so let's move on to Michael Downs.
Hey, good evening, uh, council members and the mayor. And, uh, my name is Michael Downs. I live at seventy-four Rosemont Street in Hartford. I'm also, uh, president of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers, and I've been, uh, in teaching, teaching in the city of Hartford for almost forty-five years. Um, I wanna thank the mayor and the city council and others who worked hard to, uh, get that little extra ten million dollars, ten point five million dollars. Uh, I know that you squeezed every bit of assets we could, you could possibly find, um, and, uh, uh, but, uh, it just wasn't enough. It's a shame. It's a shame that we are a city that has close to or over a trillion dollars' worth of corporations. And, uh, all I can say is we're broke. We've been on a, uh, a budget that the state puts us on, and they have a oversight committee, uh, that watches over us, and yet we have over a trillion dollars' worth of corporations, and somebody is not paying their fair share of the tax. Um, I'd like to say about the added money that we got, pensions are never a good place to borrow money. They, that is where, back fifteen years ago, the corporations eliminated their pensions because they kept borrowing from them, and they couldn't pay them back. Then they all, to avoid going broke, the unions let them take the pensions. Now, we're looking for the pensions back, uh, and it's gonna be a hard, it's probably it'll be a hard road to hoe, but they'll, they'll, they'll probably do it. Um, but the, also, the public entities have lost pensions. It's because Congress, the federal Congress, the state legislatures, and some of the, uh, municipal councils have borrowed from the, the budgets, and, excuse me, borrowed from the pension funds, and the pension funds then go broke, they're hard to pay back, and, uh, you know, the pension funds disappear. So Hartford's always had a pretty good pension fund, so I'd hate to see it go, and I hate to see it borrowed. If we, if we're borrowing from it, please pay it back quickly, because what we've lost here, um, and of course, I also mentioned, it was mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, by Carol Gale, the president of the Hartford Federation of, uh, Teachers, that there's four hundred million dollars extra in the state budget. So maybe some of that can come to Hartford, um, because we've lost after-school activities. This is, this is, this stuff that we had this year that enhanced the education of the students, field trips, resource teachers, social workers, bilingual teachers, uh, special education teachers, tutors, paraprofessional positions, child caregivers, the filled positions that supported needy students. Uh, and these, 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 uh, workers are, are, uh, minimum-wage workers. They're, they're not high-paid workers, and, uh, they're going to be laid off. Then we have library, art, music, custodians. We've already lost vocational technical education, family consumer science, which I've been saying we should get back, because that would enhance the education of, of the, uh, students that are graduating from high school, because sixty-five percent don't go to college, don't go in the military, don't go on for any other, uh, type of training or education, end up on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, next up, we have Bridget Allison. She brought, okay. Then we have Ruth Potakis, uh, followed by Daniel Myers.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good evening. Yep, we did Bridget already. Please go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Ruth Petkitis. I'm a music educator here in Hartford. I have been teaching since two thousand eight in the district, um, and I am a West Hartford resident. I love what I do. I love what I do, but I need to ask you all a question, and somebody has just escaped. You let him escape. Let me ask you all a question. Do you listen to music? I, I have a question. Answer the question. Do you listen to music?
This is a budget hearing, and so we're here to listen to you.
I got you. Do you listen to music? Any of you? Yes or no? Raise your hand if you do. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. Do you listen to music? Yes or no? Okay, of course you do. Do you ever enjoy artwork? I'll wait.
Let me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Do you enjoy artwork? Yes, you do. Yes, everyone? Yes? Do you watch movies? Any of you? Okay, cool. So look, I'm an art educator. I'm a music educator. I'm a music educator. Been here since two thousand eight. My job next year has been cut in half. Will I land on my feet? Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sure I will. I'm sure they have to give me a full-time job some way, somehow. A point-two here, a point-three there, a point-five there. My school is over three hundred students. Over three hundred students. Point-five doesn't actually educate all of my school. It doesn't. So who are we picking not to have music? And I don't know if you can tell, but I'm a very, very energetic person. I have retired from the United States Air Force in two thousand twenty-two. I was an Air National Guardsman. I was traveling to perform singing jazz and playing clarinet. I was traveling, right? But I was still doing my job here. I love what I do. They cut me in half. Do you remember when you were young? Did you go to music class? Did you take a band instrument? We just spent over sixty thousand dollars of ESAR funds on band instruments for my school, and they're gonna be sitting in the closet. You really want me to teach here, don't you? You really do. I'm a dynamic teacher. You've cut me in half. How do you feel about the students not learning about their own creative voice? How do you feel about that? I mean, I want you to dig deep. I mean, I know you guys, guys have lots of numbers to think of. I mean, I understand that, but think about your own creative voice. If you never had an opportunity to explore that creative voice, if those people who make movies for us, the music that you enjoy, the art that you enjoy, if they were poor students in Hartford, and no one gave them an opportunity to explore their creative voice, what would we be as a, a society? I just wanna say, it's a poor decision. We have elementary schools who will have no music and art next year. They made a decision to do that. My God, how short-sighted. I also want to speak on behalf of the par educators. My job would be impossible without them, and we have understaffed. I have a student in one of my classes in kindergarten who probably really shouldn't be placed in the community school. I teach at West Middle Community School, pre-K through grade five. He's non-verbal. He has two paraprofessionals, and I was told today after school that if one of those paraprofessionals does not show up absent one day, that the other paraprofessional was not allowed to handle that student in any way, shape, or form. So they're gonna come into my music classroom, and there's gonna be, you know, basses and xylophones and everything all around, and that kid isn't, cannot, nobody can stop that kid. He's non-verbal. We need more paras. We need more, not less. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your energy. I appreciate you. Think about what the arts mean to you. God bless. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Uh, Sarah White?
My name is Sarah White, and I live at one hundred sixty-seven Beacon Street and have lived in Hartford for the last twelve years. I'm the parent of two children, Darab, who's nine, and Azad, who's six, and was at Hartford Public Schools at Bachelor until this year. I'm also a co-founder of the Hartford Jewish Organizing Collective and was here last to urge passage of a ceasefire resolution, which Democrats on council abstained from because they said there were important local, important local work to do. Hartford taxpayers sent more than eighteen million military aid to Israel this year, and our public schools are now facing a thirty-one point five million dollar budget shortfall as our police budget continues to grow. We need council to find the money to stop the cuts, to work with parents and teachers to demand full funding from the state, and to ensure that our Board of Education is accountable to residents. My child Azad was a student at Bachelor Montessori until this year, and even under last year's budget, it was evident that Hartford schools had far fewer resources than my older child's crack school. Compared to Hartford, the crack school had more paras in the classroom, more available for special education and enrichment, more consistent language interpretation and translation, more books and technology in the library, arts, education, after-school activities, and more stable staffing and low turnover among teachers and other staff. I've got here a sign Azad made last year when we went to the state to demand more funding for education that he made after I explained the situation to him. It says, "Pay my teachers more money," and it has a ten million dollar bill. I know this is a state issue, but it's a local issue as well, and we have to find the money to plug the gap now, um, so that our kids can continue to get the education that they deserve. While I was very happy with Bachelor and amazed to see my four-year-old fully learn to read, I eventually moved him to the older child's school because it was logistically challenging as a single parent having my kids in separate schools, but I was also worried about the instability and high turnover in Hartford schools as a whole, even though we loved Bachelor. These inequities were apparent in a year where Hartford schools didn't face a thirty-one million dollar budget shortfall. Hartford and its students cannot weather hundreds of layoffs and further cuts. We cannot stand to lose any more teachers, paras, or custodians, and the high turnover among teachers and staff is already damaging our children's ability to learn. Our resources are constrained in Hartford, but dumping more money into a police force that's already larger than in nearly all cities our size is not the way forward. We need money for education, not police, but we also need our school board to be responsive to students, parents, and teachers about how the money is spent, and ensuring that the programs we want to see are prioritized, like arts, education, music, language justice and interpretation, so parents and kids can fully participate, and ensuring that the money is directed to our schools and not the main office or consultants. I want to see our city council fighting with us, parents, teachers, students, to demand full funding from the state and an equitable funding formula that ensures Hartford students have the schools they need and deserve. But meanwhile, we need to find the budget, the money in our budget now to ensure that there aren't layoffs. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Danelle? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Board. Thank you for being here. Um, I am Danielle Myers-Frierson. I am a resident of downtown Hartford, but I am a daughter of the North End. Um, I went to Annie Fisher Fox Middle, and I am a graduate of Weaver High School and the Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts, which prepared me for my matriculation at institutions of higher learning and receiving multiple advanced degrees from Clark Island University and NYU. Therefore, I know firsthand that Hartford is capable of providing not only quality but equitable, uh, education and services. Um, in December of two thousand twenty-two, I spoke to the Board of Education, um, regarding unfortunate incidents as it relates to bullying, as it relates to my children. I had to pull them out of Hartford Public Schools, um, so I am not negligent on my privilege. However, I am an employee of Hartford Public Schools, and I was given my pink slip last Monday. I'm a school counselor here at Weaver High School, and I started in December. These budget cuts will continue to hurt not only our staff, but our most important resources, and I'm not gonna belabor you, because you all have been here and you're listening. So I hope that you continue to work collaboratively with all constituents, all stakeholders, because that's the only way that our students will be successful, and our staff, and our community. If we don't work together, these children are gonna set the world on fire, and not in the good way. So I wanna leave you with this. While I am educated, I am not a Latin expert or anything of that nature, but I will try my best, so please bear with me. Hartford's motto is "Post Nubila Phibus," which is Latin for "After the Clouds, the Sun." The last thought from the amazing and incomparable James Baldwin, "For these are all our children. We will either profit by or pay for whatever they become. I implore you to make the right decisions and comb through the budget from top to bottom." Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Arlene Valencia, uh, followed by another Valencia. Uh, Arlene, go right ahead.
Yes. I am Naomi. Um, I am a student at Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts.
Speak a little bit louder.
I am a student at Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts.
Great.
And I believe opportunities should not be limited to people who seek them. We deserve resources to help us enhance our knowledge and creativity. I care to learn and seek help if I'm in need of it, but if my teachers are overwhelmed in an overcrowded, overcrowded classroom, who's gonna help me and my classmates? I've seen that my teachers do a lot for my school, more than they are expected of actually. I've seen teachers go out of their way to pay for field trips for students who, to visit colleges that they're most interested in visiting. They already do enough for us by teaching us. I believe it's a violation to the rights of my classmates, our teachers, and schools that this reduction is, that this reduction of funding is taking place without taking in any consideration on how it would affect the future opportunities and learning of our students. Justice is needed for the people who haven't spoken up already, and we are families that care for our kids and their future, and we actively help in the community. We pay taxes. If you can take our hard-earned money that we're in more need of, don't we have, don't we deserve to have a say in this reduction and actually be heard? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have, um, another Valencia. I'm not gonna mess up the person's first name. Alame? Alame? Yes, come on up. I hate messing people's names.
Hi, sorry.
Hello.
My name is Sayad Valencia. Sorry. Um, I'm twenty-one years old. I'm a two thousand twenty-two graduate. Um, I've heard everyone else's speeches, and I've been through it. During my middle school years and part of my high school years, I was used as an interpreter for students that came from Mexico, Ecuador, Colombia, and Puerto Rico. I was used during my class time, my- During my middle school years and part of my high school years, I was used as an interpreter for students that came from Mexico, Ecuador, Colombia, and Puerto Rico. I was used during my class time, my education time, for me to learn and every, everything to educate them and teach them. I was behind in work teaching them because in my schools, there was no interpreter. I was practically the only bilingual kid throughout those entire schools, teaching other students that just came wanting for a better future. My parents are immigrants. They came here for a better future for me. But because of Hartford Public Schools not having good education, not funding things either, or teachers, um, I had to struggle. I had to go through that. I had to make the sacrifice because I'm so kind-hearted. Um, also, I went to Dwight Bilizi. That was the middle school I went to, which was also considered as Asian Studies Academy, an Asian Studies-based school. Um, eighth graders had the opportunity to fund field trips for themselves to different countries. Some went to India, some went to Thailand, some went to China. They raised that money themselves and they went. I did not get to have that experience because the principal who organized it had to leave. Um, and all our field trips and everything, we students fundraised that. Little kids from pre-K to eighth grade. We fundraised all our field trips and we fundraised our ACs to be put in our building. We made cookouts. We made um, little crafts to sell and stuff. We gathered parents to see shows and whatever to fundraise for our needs, ourselves, since y'all did not want to pay for it. We were, we were, we were given a choice between AC and a playground, but we chose an AC due to the drastic hot weather we've been going through in our classrooms. We had to miss school because of how hot our classrooms were. We did all that. Not you guys, us. Us as students and as parents. So I really, please, help us, help other schools, um, because nobody wants to go through that. No other student wants to suffer through all that. Nobody wants to sacrifice their education for the needs that other people in the future may need. Please and thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next up, we have Sageti Walker, then Millie Arsenegas. Not sure if Millie is here. Um, oh. Ms. Walker? Sageti? Sagadi? Not here? Okay. Well, then we'll go with um, Millie Arsenegas. I know it's a long way down here, Millie, isn't it? We save the best for last.
Good evening, council members. Um, Mr. Mayor, it's great seeing you guys. Uh, we have a lot of work to do. Doesn't feel good down here. Um, sometimes it's not what you do, it's how you do it. And when we don't feel included in this process, this is what it causes: confusion. You know, what is going to happen to my pension? Those are the questions on the ground. Even though you know the answers, we don't know the answers. So if we get the right people at the table, the board, you know, board exists. The board exists, right? So we have to have them at the table before we make critical decisions like that. And we hold the council accountable, right? Because there has to be an ordinance out there, right, that explains this. Has it been done before, right? We want to know things like that because it just makes it easier for us to help other people understand what's going on. So I hope that you take everything that was here today, because there was a lot of things that were already spoken, and start from the bottom and look to see where you can take from, right? We're not taking from some departments because they're not going to lose jobs, right? So, and maybe, maybe we don't create something this year. Maybe we have to postpone it till next year. But I would rather do that, and that's just my, as a resident of Hartford, that's my say, right? I would rather do that than go into a pension fund. You know, if we, we put stuff on hold, we say, hey, you know what? I'm not doing this this year. We can't do this this year. We'll do it next year. But we'll say, we'll put $1.8 million instead of in the police department where they have vacancies, right? Instead of giving them increase, let's take that and put it into the Hartford Public Schools for now. And look at what things are working and what things are not working. Because if we hear that they couldn't put more, more uh, police patrol in the neighborhoods on foot because they couldn't staff it, staff those positions, then why give $1.8 million to the police department? Let's look at those issues first. And then when you exhausted everything, then you can explain to the community about the pension fund and about the ordinance that allows this type of action to be done, right? That's being responsible as leaders. Because we look to you to do all of those things, all of the due diligence. Sit with people around the table before a press conference is done. We look to you. That's why you're there. I'm here to give out the information, right? To my, my constituents, my, the people that I serve, and my neighbors. So I'm here today to let you, uh, to, to help you understand that this is not pretty over here and our kids deserve more. When our kids see you guys do that and look at every single little thing you could do before going in a pension fund, that's when you can say, I've done my job. And go home and sleep at night. That's what I'm about to do right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Yula Dobson, followed by Cynthia Jennings.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The only thing I want for Hartford um, is to get a better education than I got. I'm a Weaver High School graduate. I won't name the year. But you know, we had an opportunity to do what the ladies said. We had art classes, music classes, et cetera, et cetera. And our kids should have that same opportunity because that's all part of growth. And I can't, and I was going to talk about parks and recreation, but you need to get the educational system in its place. Because rec, because kids need rec as well as education. And it makes me really, really sad when we're fighting the same battles. Because I was involved with the Youth Council of the NAACP for probably 13 or 14 years. And we shouldn't have to continue to fight the same fight that you always talk about, you want your kids to get a good education. People run for Board of Education or run for office and they always say kids are number one. Well, we need to find out where can we get this money? Because I know that we have a lot of buildings in Hartford that the state is not paying taxes. What can we do to press them to give us our money? Our money is there because the city can only tax us so much. We got a, we got, our taxes went up last year. And I know that we have limited resources, but we need to lobby the state to find out where is the money? Because you, you want to be able to say, you want to have a good, a good school system because you want people to come and move into Hartford. Because it's a shame. What are we doing wrong that our kids are escaping to suburbs to get a good education? I got a good education. I graduated. I went to college. I got a master's. I worked for the city for 32 years. So evidently, public education worked. So we need to put our heads together. Back in the old days, the corporations used to give us money. Are they giving us anything, Mayor? Is the corporation giving us any money to help bail out the school system? Well, we, maybe we need to meet with these executives to find out, can they help us? Because we need help because our kids need a good education. Because without the good education, they cannot sit in the chairs that you're sitting in. My friend works at the University of Hartford and a lot of the kids that come up there who take his English class are failing because they're not getting what they need. So we need to figure out what we can do in Hartford to improve the school system where parents would keep their kids here. Because once the choice came in and charter school came in, the, the money goes with the kid. So the more kids that leave, the less resources we have to maintain our schools. So you know, I should not be sitting, standing here talking about the same thing over and over again. We have to hit the state, the feds, you know, they, they say, where's the beef? I want to know where's the money.
iPhone got updated. The districting got updated. Yeah, that's what it is. All right. Yeah. Uh, Cynthia Jennings? Bridget?
Hi, um, Madam President, um, Cynthia Jennings yielded her time to me. May I take a minute or two?
You only have two minutes.
For two minutes will work. Thank you. Um, Madam President, um, my name is Bridget Prince. Um, Cynthia Jennings has yielded her time to me. I wanted to make a comment about the funding that's going to the police department. Um, what I would like to have the council and the mayor really look at and consider when they are considering approving that budget is you could look at police departments in all the surrounding towns, East Hartford, Manchester, Glastonbury. And the one thing I can say about those towns, there's not this deficit. There is not this problem of recruiting and retaining police officers there that you have here. Um, even from what I understand, when you've had the opportunity to recruit these police officers and hire them, there was a problem with retention. So maybe if you could sit there and look at the possibility that it may be about culture and leadership and not the fact that people don't want to be police officers, because this is not a problem anywhere else. So I would like you to look at the leadership, look at the numbers. Look at the fact that the Hartford Police Department and a city where it's 85% minority, black and brown, is 60% male and 85, excuse me, of white and 85% male. There's a problem with that, but me, and I want to say this because I am a advocate and a supporter of the police department, being a veteran. We have the same mission. We have the same calling. That's to protect and serve. But you have to have a look at what is going on in the police department from the leader on down and why there are these problems. And maybe you can divert some of that money to the Education Department. I'm also standing here saying that they need $40 million in the Board of Education. If you can consider moving some of that money to help these children, that'll be helpful. Um, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we've got a few more speakers left. Uh, Leani Aroro. Then we, if Shontay Brady is still here, and Clyde Watt.
Good evening. My daughter decided she wanted to say a few words, so I'm going to let her introduce herself first and then read you what you have to say.
Um, hello, my name is Amaris. I am currently attending Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy, otherwise known as HMTC. The other day, some of my friends had been talking about teachers that are getting laid off. Unfortunately, it was teachers that we related to, teachers we had close relationships with. One of the eighth-grade teachers who has a close friendship with some of the seventh-grade students, he is always there for them and has kept them in good shape and in good behavior. But now he's getting laid off. I don't know what will happen to my classmates, but I know it does have a big, it does have a big impact.
Can I just stop you one second? Don't be shy. And don't be shy. Take your time and speak to us. We want to hear every word you say. Okay, louder. Yes.
I ask you to please fund our schools fully.
Good.
All right, she's walking away. Good evening. My name is Leani Arroyo and I'm a resident of Hartford and live on Westerly Terrace. Both of my daughters, a 12-year-old, 12-year-old whom you just met that attends HMTC and a seven-year-old who attends Annie Fisher STEM. They both attend Hartford Public Schools and I want to keep it that way. I chose to have my daughters attend Hartford Public Schools because I know public schools work. Public schools are the great equalizer. They help create vibrant communities and they help create upward mobility. Ask me how I know. I am a product of Bridgeport Public Schools, a city that shares many similarities with Hartford. And those schools set me on the path to be the first person in my family to graduate from college, to get my master's degree, and to ultimately serve my community. I want those same opportunities that I had to be available for all children. I want all children to see their futures as bright and promising. I don't want a child's future determined by their zip code or by their parent's income, but right now it is. Our children's future is being limited by a lack of investment in schools. In reality, a lack of investment in our children, children who are overwhelmingly Latino and black. What message does that send? It tells my daughters and their friends that they don't matter. Their futures do not matter. I know that isn't what you all believe. I know you all want more for the city and for our children. While we focus on what the current school administration has or hasn't done, you could replace whomever is at the top and the same issues will exist because the issues are structural. We've known this for years. The current system incentivizes parents to leave our schools and it creates a vicious cycle. It destabilizes communities. It creates population loss for our city. In addition to these structural issues, I think it's important to note that our schools continue to pick up the slack for the lack of investment in our communities in general. Our schools feed children multiple meals a day, provide food to their families on the weekends, provide healthcare services. Put simply, schools in Hartford have to make up for the failures of civil society. Slightly over four years ago, I sat in a room with our former mayor and our current school superintendent discussing the closing of our schools due to COVID. Not only was there concern about the disrupting of education of our children, there were concerns about the families of students and their ability to keep an eye on them, the ability of our children's to eat, of our students to eat. Quite frankly, the ability of our students to simply survive during a pandemic. Not thrive, just survive. Again, a failure of civil society. Tonight, I ask you to, at a minimum, put in the additional funding to keep our current teachers and support staff in place. It's the minimum. It keeps things the same. We all know that much more is needed to make up for the failures of our society, to pay living wages, provide healthcare. But the minimum is a start. In closing, there's a saying, "Vote like your life depends on it." I think that is relevant here. I ask you to vote on a budget like our city's children's lives depend on it, because it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Shontay Brody, followed by Claude Watt.
Good evening. I, I sincerely appreciate all the advocacy for Hartford Public Schools um, that was expressed tonight by our community. And I honestly did not plan to speak tonight. I just was coming to, to listen. I know that teachers and staff was coming to advocate and I wanted to be present to hear them. But some of our speakers have mentioned, and I will too, is we under, we clearly understand as a community, when we get a new mayor, we're going to get new things because the mayor comes in with their ideas. Um, couple red flags for me, though. When we had, the mayor had a When we had, the mayor had a transition team. When I looked on the education part of the transition team, there was not one current board member, no one currently serving in any board or even in the capacity to represent like the superintendent. So that was concerning to me, big red flag, that there's a transition team for education and the current board leadership was nowhere there. That's number one. But I was like, this is our mayor, whether we voted for him or not, this is our mayor, we want him to be successful because if you're successful, Mr. Mayor, we are all successful. But what prompted me to speak tonight, and I, it seemed like I hear a bird chirping cause I was about, so what I was about to say is, um, a little birdie told me that we're, we're a nine-person board, but we currently only have six board of that members. So every committee meeting is a committee at a whole, we're struggling. We need everybody, we, to make a quorum, right? So I have to look forward to in the next month or so, that what I would have preferred, I thought it would be responsible, we have one Dem seat that has not been filled, that's a process. I'm the working families candidate, we have five mayoral seats, but three are filled, two empty. So what was logical to me was that the mayor would fill the two seats, we would have at least eight members, and we would get to, through the year, try to make it work. Through this budget crisis, through what we need to do as a, um, board, laying off teachers is never something we ever wanna do, that's the last thing we wanna do. But it is my understanding that we will have five new school board members. So the three mayor seats we have now, they're gonna be replaced, it's gonna be two, so we're gonna have myself, two other Dems, and five new people. That has stressed me out from the moment I've walked in this room. It's unfair. It is extremely unfair because some of, because it just does not have to happen that way. You all know, if five of you, not even five, because it would be the majority of you, were not here next month to run this council, that's chaos. I don't, I, I can't even express, I've been doing this advocacy thing, I don't even know who convinced me to do this thing. Like sitting on a board is so stressful because you want the best for children, but you know you don't have enough to do it with. This year coming, we definitely don't have enough to do it with. But not having enough to do it with, and we're doing it like with all new, it is unfair to every child that goes to Hartford Public Schools, it's unfair to every staff member that works in Hartford Public Schools, and it's unfair to the board leadership because it's like we're being stripped. If any of you watch the meetings, I disagree a lot with my board members, but I respect them because we all don't have to be the same, we just have to have all the right pieces to be a good board. I, I think this is extremely, I'm not even gonna say that word, but it is irresponsible, not appreciated. We need to do better. And like a past speaker said, we need to do things with each other and not to each other. This sucks.
Thank you. Claude Watt?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you guys doing today? That's a lot, right?
Yes.
It's been an awful lot. I represent Hartford Public Schools, I'm an elected E-Board member, I'm also the district electrician, and I represent the heartbeat of Hartford Public Schools. We are the foundation of this city. My name is Claude Watt III, sir. What's your name? I don't know your name.
Go ahead, sir.
Oh, it's all good. No disrespect, I'm just.
Go ahead, sir.
No, it's all good. Appreciate it, thank you so much. Hello again, hey, how you guys doing? I'm the last, best for last, you know, my last name's Watt, so I'm used to this. But anyway, I'm here to sit there and say, we're not the problem, we're the solution. We sit there, we operate these buildings, you're in one of our buildings right now that my, the people that I represent are opening and gonna close it for you. When they sit there and they have storms and stuff, you don't have any catastrophic failures here. Back in the day, the schools were the community center for everything that happens in Hartford. I mean, anything in any, any district that you're in. You go to the school system for what? After-school programs, sports, anything that system gets your kids where, you know, they're not tearing up your house. I'm, I'm a father, so you know, I could speak to that. But we have programs, we have, we have people in our community right now that are set up to sit there and take the youth off the streets and put them back into the schools, allow them to clean up their own community, teach them the worth of this city, because this city is amazing. I don't know if you guys haven't been out here in the summertime, but Hartford gets, it gets going. And you know, we appreciate this city, we love this city, and that's why so many people sit there and show up and they care about this place. I, I found about, out this about the last minute, but you know, I had to come inside to sit there and speak and say hello. Eighty-seven percent of the members that I represent are all Hartford residents, and you're gonna take away from a fund that's for their pensions and they're gonna lose their jobs. We're already, we're already so short-staffed as it is. We can, I don't know how, I really don't, and that's you guys' decision, but what I'm sitting there saying is, you have all these people that are here willing to sit there and stand up and support, you have people that are willing to sit there and volunteer. We've got kids, as a parent, put these kids to work, you know, they're here for it, they, they use these buildings, I, I fix everything they destroyed, I fix everything everybody else destroyed. But again, it's fixable, it's always fixable. And thank you for your time, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Orelis, Orelis Guzman. And then after is gonna be Maria Adelia. Adele, so come on down and get ready for the, we're gonna kill everyone out.
Buenas noches concejales. Mi nombre es Oralys Guzman y vivo en la Madison Street, aquí en Hartford Conérico. Tengo dos hijos en la escuela Montessori Magnet de Belchelder, en la cual me he sentido muy tranquila con mis hijos. Ellos merecen estar en una escuela segura, limpia, con clases pequeñas y una educación artística. Me siento muy preocupada por el recorte que están haciendo porque tendrá un impacto muy negativo para nuestros hijos. Por eso le pido a la ciudad de Hartford que evite estos cortes e invierta en el futuro de nuestros niños, ya que ellos son el futuro del mañana.
I'm translating. Good evening, Councilman, my name is Oralis Guzman. I live on Madison Street here in Hartford, I have two children at the Montessori Magnet at Belchelder, where I have felt very comfortable with my children. They deserve to be in a safe, clean, small classes with arts education. I am very concerned about the cuts that are happening because it is a very, it will have a very negative impact on our children. That is why I'm asking the City of Hartford to avoid the cuts and invest in our children's future. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Maria?
Buenas noches. Buenas noches al público que aún permanece. Gracias por su tiempo y por estar aquí. Mi nombre es María De La Pineda. Llegué a la ciudad de Hartford hace siete años. Soy emigrante y madre de tres hijos, uno de diecinueve años, actualmente estudiante de la Universidad Central de Conérico, y unas gemelas de once años, estudiantes de sexto grado en la Escuela Clásico Magnet. Una de mis niñas es síndrome Down, así que ella necesita una atención de educación especial calificada y de excelencia. Actualmente cuenta con los servicios correspondientes, pero han de preocuparme ciertos eventos que han surgido en las escuelas. Actualmente en la Escuela Clásico Magnet, mis niñas tienen una materia que se llama latín. Hace unos meses atrás, el profesor dejó de ir a la, a la escuela. Ese puesto lo cubre una ex-alumna de esa escuela. No hay un profesor, un maestro calificado en ese puesto. Otro caso es que mi niña de educación especial necesita y amerita una para profesional durante todo su tiempo de, de clase. Cuando esta para no asiste a la escuela por motivos de salud o motivos personales, no hay en la escuela un personal que suplente esa, ese puesto. Así que he recibido llamadas de la misma escuela diciéndome que vaya a retirar a la niña porque no hay un personal que cuide a la niña, ya que la para profesional de ese día o la que la cuida no está. Me han llegado notificaciones diciéndome que no mande a la niña a la escuela ese día porque la asistente o la para no va a ir. Me parece ilógico, me parece injusto que mi niña necesite ir a la escuela y que de la misma escuela me digan, no puede. Son situaciones que nos preocupan a nosotros como padres. Si en estos momentos que aún no se ha ejecutado por completo esta reducción de fondos en el sistema educativo y ya sentimos el golpe y la escasez, la carencia en nuestras escuelas, ¿cómo será cuando este evento se ejecute o en su totalidad? Hemos tenido maestros en escuelas públicas como la Bell Latino Academy, donde maestros dividen grupos de salones para poder sustentar el apoyo de otro colega que falta. Quisiera que pensáramos en el futuro de nuestros hijos, las necesidades que tendrán que sufrir en escuelas que son prácticamente su segundo hogar. Este recorte de fondos afectará a todos los estudiantes, emigrantes y no emigrantes. Como grupo que está presente en esta sala, como madres luchadoras que queremos un mejor porvenir y una mejor preparación académica para nuestros hijos, les pedimos a ustedes, representantes, alcalde, le pedimos que por favor haya una rendición de cuentas, que los fondos sean distribuidos para reclutar nuevos maestros, nuevos paras profesionales, personal calificado, mejorar nuestras escuelas, mejorar nuestros servicios. Creemos que de esta manera clara y transparente que debemos avanzar en el sistema educativo de nuestro estado de Conérico.
My name is María De La Pineda. I arrived in the City of Hartford seven years ago. I am an immigrant mother of three children, a nineteen-year-old, a current student at Central Connecticut State University, and eleven-year-old twins who are in sixth grade at Classical Magnet School. One of my girls is Down Syndrome, so she needs qualified and excellent special education services. She currently has the appropriate support, but I am concerned about certain events that have arisen at the school. Currently in the Classical Magnet School, my girls have Latin class, and it's been a few months since they've had a qualified teacher. That position is being filled by a former student who is not qualified. Another case is my special education child. She needs a para profesional with her, and when this person does not attend school for health or personal reasons, the school has called me to withdraw my daughter or not send her to class that day because they do not have the staff to teach her. These are situations that concern us. If this funding reduction has not yet been fully implemented in the education system and the need is already being felt in our children's classrooms, what will it be like when the time comes? Where Hartford, where Hartford Public School teachers have had to split, split classrooms to make up for the absence of a colleague? I would like to think about, I would like us to think about the future of our children, the needs they will have to endure in the school that is practically their second home. The funding cuts will affect all immigrant and non-immigrant students in our region. As a group that is represented in this room as struggling mothers who want a better academic preparation for our children, we ask for accountability. That the funds be distributed to recruit new teachers and for the services that are needed for our students. We believe that it is in this clear and transparent manner that we must move forward in our state of Connecticut's and the City of Hartford's education system.
Thank you. That is our last speaker for the evening. I would like to thank everyone who came out to lend their voice, and their opinion and their advice on this fiscal year 24, 25 budget. Mayor, would you like to, any closing statement before we make this closest meeting?
I'll be incredibly brief. Thank you for your advocacy and thank you for sharing your thoughts and thank you to council members.
Great. I hereby call this meeting to a close and again, thank everyone for coming out.